Okay, well, welcome everyone to our March 26 meeting. Meeting a little early tonight so we can all be good civic citizens and go and see the school board forum. So, or those of us who can are going, I assume. So anyway, we're meeting a little bit early. So at this point, let's just call the room.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Here.
Alderwoman Hughes.
Here.
Alderwoman Patel.
Here.
Alderman Fader.
Here.
Alderman Hummel.
Here.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
City Manager Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Now's the time on our agenda for public requests and petitions. If anybody has questions or comments on a topic for us tonight, would you please raise your hand if you're on screen or just come forward and let us know? Okay, I see no hands and nobody stepping forward, so we'll move on into the public hearing for Starbucks. I will open the public hearing and request proof of publication.
Right, this is for the location at 7645 Wydown Boulevard, which is at the corner of Wydown and Hanley. This is a public hearing to consider an application for a conditional use permit submitted on behalf of Mark Sullivan to allow the operation of a 2,296 square foot restaurant to be known as Starbucks. The previous restaurant has been closed for over a year, requiring approval of a new conditional use permit for the new restaurant. The previous Starbucks was a corporate location while the proposed operator is a franchisee. The proposed hours of operation are daily from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. There is no off-street parking located on the property for the commercial space. The restaurant is located outside of the Central Business District and is therefore required to provide employee parking. The applicant has stated that employees will park at 222 South Central in downtown Clayton. Deliveries to the restaurant will be made through the main entrance on Wydown and are expected to occur Mondays and Wednesdays between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. The business will be responsible for coordinating deliveries so that traffic and parking along Wydown Boulevard and Hanley Road are not impacted and that no safety issues are created. The Plan Commission reviewed the proposed conditional use permit at their meeting on March 18th and voted to recommend approval to the Board of Aldermen. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a conditional use permit for the operation of Starbucks located at 7645 Wydown Boulevard per the conditions outlined in the resolution, and I believe the applicant is present online this evening.
Online, okay. And that would be?
Larry Moore.
Larry Moore, welcome Larry. And we are, everyone here and so many more are thrilled to have this Starbucks location reopen. I think I can speak for the whole community around there that just, we just have been waiting and waiting for this, and I know a whole bunch of kids that go to Wydown Middle School have been waiting and waiting for this. So, thank you so much for doing this, and I'm going to ask first in the audience, online or here, if anybody has questions for Larry. Yes, please come forward and state your name and your address for the record, and make sure the microphone is on green. Is it on?
Now it's on.
Yeah, now it's on.
Thank you. I can hear my own voice. The only question I have, first of all, I'm super, super excited, but I live on Forest Court where I'm right around the corner from all the other restaurants who, the delivery trucks are really challenging. They either completely block the street, the police have been called on multiple occasions to have them move, or they block the driveway, or they block the alley. So, it's just one, I mean, one more delivery truck, and I understand the concern about not, you know, blocking or anything else, but I don't know what kind of coordination there is, and I don't know what the city is doing to make sure that there is some coordination of delivery times, or whether they can even do that. So I just wanted to put that forward.
Okay, appreciate it. Now, Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment?
There's probably little we can do on the coordination end, just because they are getting deliveries at different times and those are going to be on their own schedules. From the city's standpoint, we've done more on the enforcement side than anything else, and it's monitoring the area, making sure that when patrols go by, if we've got delivery vehicles that are blocking anything or double parked, that we're addressing that situation when it occurs. So, it's something we monitor, and with Starbucks there, getting even more deliveries at the corner is something we're going to have to watch even more closely, but I do think a broader coordinated effort would probably be difficult, given the variation in hours of operation with all those restaurants there. But perhaps the applicant can talk about those deliveries a little bit more, and how they anticipate that to work.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, do you have any comment on that?
Do not. I will check and make sure that we can try to make sure that they stay out of the street as much as possible, you know, pass the word. But Trey Williams, the franchisee that's going in there, he may be able to give more information, but I will find out.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments on our board? Yeah, I'll just go in order, yeah.
Yeah, hey, Mr. Moore, Ira Berkowitz speaking. Yeah, no, welcome. Thank you for, thank you for jumping in and saving me from any more people calling me and asking me about the Starbucks.
Yes.
So, the only question I have though is the, you know, employee parking, do you have any idea where you might consider doing that?
I do not have that information. I know that Trey was getting the parking situation figured out, and he was going to send the letter in. I'm not sure if he's done that yet, but that's something else that I can find out from him.
We did receive information from Trey, and I, we had a brief exchange of emails late this afternoon as well, and the location that he was talking about was 222 South Central. So, I included in that, in the oral report that I gave here, but it wasn't actually in the packet, because that was just given to us here recently. But we sent some questions with some concerns about the location of that spot here in the Central Business District relative to where the Starbucks will be located at Hanley and Wydown, and, you know, the weather's not nice. I can't imagine somebody parking at 222 South Central and then walking over to Hanley and Wydown to work. He did indicate that a lot of the employees are dropped off or take Uber or other things to the location, but I got to imagine there's going to be some employee parking. So, that's something that still needs to be addressed, and I think we probably need a spot that's a little bit closer to the actual location. I would agree with that, and it doesn't look like Mr. Williams is on the call here this evening, so.
No, but I will, I will check into that.
All right, appreciate that. Let us know when you find something out, but yeah, it would be important that the parking is convenient to the employees so that they actually use it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bridgette, no, Susan?
Yeah, I appreciate you getting that corner active again. Thanks very much. Just a couple of questions. One on the parking, what kind of ordinances, is it congestion of an area for too long, or what have we seen before with enforcing that with deliveries on that corner?
On the deliveries themselves?
Yeah.
It's a tough one, because most of those delivery trucks are going to stop somewhere, you know, if those parking spaces are available, that's, that's great, and we've had that situation here recently with Starbucks being closed. The other, you know, if they're not offering lunch at those other restaurants, a lot of times those spaces, they can kind of pull over a little bit more and get out of the right of way. It's a little bit trickier when Starbucks is there to kind of pull off the street and do that. So, you know, historically, when the last store was there, that was an issue we were constantly dealing with, trying to make sure that there was a way for cars to get through, and hopefully the deliveries go quick. And I'm not sure, and Mr. Moore, you may be able to answer this, I don't, I don't know what the capabilities would be of servicing that building off the alley or not. It's just a really tough site for it, there at that corner.
Okay, and one of the other ordinances, I'm sorry, is the idling ordinance?
As far as idling ordinance, that would apply.
Okay.
And then, of course, impeding traffic, which is also in our code, is another enforceable action we could take.
Moore, did I cut you off? Were you going to say something on that, or?
Oh, I'm just going to say that we could speak with the delivery drivers and let them know the expectations and the worries with them coming, and see if we can minimize it all.
Okay, and then I also wanted to commend you on the commitment to recycling, and I'm wondering, who are you contracting with to have that happen, and how do, how do you see that? How do you visualize that?
I do not have that information, I'm sorry.
Is that something you can get back to us with?
I sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that's good about this is that we've experienced this before. We've had a Starbucks there, so we had some learning, I'm assuming, on where people parked and how the deliveries were managed, so it seems like we ought to be able to, working with this franchisee, figure it out. Alderwoman Patel.
Thanks. One question, we're, I heard you mention Trey Williams is the franchisee, but the name in the written report is Mark Sullivan, what's the, can you help me understand that business relationship?
They are partners in the same company.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, that's great. And then, what are they targeting for an opening date?
I do not have that information, I'm sorry, but I can get back with you on that. I was, you know, the architect that worked on the drawings and submitted this, and I thought Trey was going to be here as well tonight, but I don't have that information.
Okay, thanks. My daughter and her friends are very excited and would like to know how soon they can start spending all their money at Starbucks.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure as soon as they can get it open, they will, but I will see if I can find out and get an email.
Trey, the Plan Commission meeting mentioned trying to get it open this summer, so they have already started the process of submitting for their construction permits. They're doing some upgrades inside to meet the new brand, I guess, of Starbucks. So, as soon as the CUP is processed, then those construction, you know, start, that starts, and they'll go from there, so hopefully this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, Mr. Fader.
I was just curious about Section 14, which I understand from David, is, is kind of a standard, a provision we've seen before, but refers to carryout business being permitted only on a six-month trial basis. Is that something, Mr. Moore, that you had any particular interest in, or is this simply that's something in the, do you have any reason to believe you're going to have any true carryout business other than the traditional, which is someone grabs a cup of coffee and walks out with it? Is your food business going to be such that people would actually order and drive by and then want to carry out?
I do not think so, but then again, that's something I would have to find out.
All right, well, I'm assuming that this is just sort of standard and isn't particularly unique to your operation, in which case, it's fine, so, thanks.
Okay, okay, very good. All right then, I think if that's all the discussion, we can, I can close the public hearing, and we can have a motion.
All right, well, I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-03 granting a conditional use permit for 7645 Wydown Boulevard doing business as Starbucks.
Second, sorry, any discussion?
Just one thing, when that information does come back from the franchisee, will you share that with us on those different issues?
So, it'll be, yes, it'll be information on employee parking, the delivery trucks, and then also recycling, is what I have down.
When they plan to open.
And opening date.
Yes.
Okay, I think we had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right, Larry, you guys are good to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and it's just got the three things on it. The lighting study, the minutes from last meeting, and the liquor license for Genzin, or the extended liquor license. Anybody want to discuss any of those things? Very good. In that case, we'll take a motion.
I move to, let's see, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a roll call, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hughes.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
All right, the City Manager's report.
First item this evening is a discussion on residential permit parking. Mr. Gary Carter, Director of Economic Development, here is, is here this evening to give a presentation.
Good evening. So, we attempted this presentation a couple months ago, and I think I clouded the issue severely at that time, so I'm, I'm here to make this more concise and hopefully briefer than, than last time. But, again, the most, the salient point of this presentation is that we are taking the existing residential parking permits, or want to take those residential parking permits, and take those from a sticker and hang tag situation to using, utilizing our Passport Parking Program, and particularly the permits, which will allow the system to go digital as opposed to the current system that it is now. So here's, here's a few of the definitions from the current, current ordinance, it's just talking about what is a resident, what is a residential parking zone, visitors and the parking permit and the visitor permits. This is the existing parking zones, and more importantly, this is the proposed parking zones. There is no change to the parking zones, and these are a representation of all the areas that have time-restricted parking in the neighborhoods with the residential exemption. So these are typically the areas in high-volume areas such as adjacent to Wash U or Central Presbyterian, or the downtown area. So we have four residential parking zones, none of which will be changed. Those zones come with a color, a number to them to identify each zone. Residents are issued stickers for their own vehicles and hang tags for their guests and visitors. Probably the, one of the more important issues is that the stickers and hang tags do not Kind of representation, you've probably all seen these, some of you have these, the hang tags and the stickers. Unclaimed hand tags, many residents who move out of Clayton don't return those. We don't have any accounting that those are no longer valid, so they remain in circulation or potentially could remain in circulation, and especially with the visitor tags, we have found those being used by non-residents in certain situations. Sometimes it's down by Wash U, sometimes it's in Old Town with downtown employees having found those somehow, and parking in the neighborhoods there. And then, probably the biggest changes in what caused staff to bring this, to this today, is just the system is old. It requires people to come in person to the police station at the TVB and apply for and pick up their stickers and tags. This is one of the questions that came up, I think, at the last presentation, why are we using Passport? We currently have almost 200,000 users using Passport in Clayton, and we also have unlimited permits through Passport, so something wouldn't be additional cost to us. I think one of the questions at the last meeting was who else was using them in Missouri, and this is their current, current list of users. St. Louis Parking and Washington University being the most relevant to the discussion. So the proposal is that we will keep the existing zones. The existing residential permits, which we do have a spreadsheet of, will be given to Passport, and they will automatically enroll all those existing permits into the system. So it should be relatively seamless for our residents in the initial stage. And there's nothing to do, because it's in by license plate, and it's read by our LPR system, so there's no tags, there's, there's nothing for them to do essentially on the initial phase of this. Now, there potentially could be slips through the crack, but enforcement will be white glove until we get the bugs worked out. We're proposing that residents would apply on a three-year cycle, depending on the initial step, so say that we kick this off January 1st of 2025, all the permits and all the visitor tags would be good for three years from that date. However, if someone moves in in '26, their permit is still going to expire on '28, so that's how we're going to attempt to stagger the different timing. Residents will still be able to accommodate visitors, employees, what else? They could either use the permit system to put them in digitally, or they can still request physical tags, but going forward, the physical tags will have expiration date on them. There is an initial cost to that data dump of taking our existing spreadsheet and dumping that into the Passport system of $8,000, so this does carry that $8,000 cost associated I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Go around in order. Ira, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got just a couple of questions. Am I, am I hearing you right, that each resident, when the system is put into place, we would all have to go and reapply for virtual permits?
Yes.
For every resident in the city of Clayton would have to know that they're going to reapply for their virtual permit?
Residents in residentially restricted parking areas would have to, yes. And it's similar to the current residential discount that we have now through Passport. We currently have, residents are, can apply, approve their residency through the Passport system, and they get a discount on the parking meters downtown, and that expires annually.
Okay, so I have, let's say I have a guest over and, and I, my, I guess my, my guest passes are expired, because the three years went by and I just didn't keep track. And my guess is, nobody's going to keep track, and it's going to be discovered at a time when they need one. Okay, how easy is it for me to get one, re-up, or re-up on one, get a new one?
You could either apply through the app, which will take you to a website and get that started, or you can come down to the police station and get physical hang tags.
Okay, it's Friday night, my guests have come over, they want to park in my, on my street, can I have a completed pass for them that night? Is that something I?
No, no, that's not possible, but the reality is, is that on a Friday night, unless it was a complaint call to the police department, enforcement is highly unlikely.
Please, my next question, how much enforcement has there been, let's say over the past year, have you given out, you know, do you know how many, how many violations there have been of people not having this, this visitor pass, this visitor zone pass?
I'd have to, Alderman, I'd have to check the numbers on how many that we've actually issued and were enforced. Occasionally, we do have situations where people have, say, a nanny or domestic help in their, and they've been issued a ticket, but they usually call parking enforcement, and the ticket's been resolved that way. But I'd have to check on the exact number of, that, that's going to be a little clouded, because we're going to have actual violators, you know, especially in areas like Old Town or down by Washington University, where we have students or employees of downtown businesses park there, trying to avoid having to pay for parking in downtown.
You're saying that some areas would have more of a volume than others just because of their location?
Yes.
My last comment is, is I, and I, I appreciate all this, I, I still would wonder, I still don't really get why each of the, each of our residential zones are restricted to other residential zone residents. I don't understand why we do that. If I'm going to have dinner with a friend of mine living in Clayton, but he's in a different zone, I would have to, I'd have to obtain a visitor pass for my car sitting on the street in a city where I pay taxes and, and I have a lot of friends, right? So, why wouldn't, why are we separating the residential zones? And I understand that there's some zones, because you have maybe Wash U students who live in one zone, and now they're going to go and, and park in another residential zone near Wash U, and I think that we can make accommodation for that, but for residents who are living in a particular zone, ordinarily, why would we restrict their parking in their own city?
Well, the residential, and I, I don't really know the answer, I mean, the, the residential zone map, the last time it was altered in the ordinances was 1984, I think, is, what, June and I, yeah, in 1984. So I, you know, I can tell you from managing parking enforcement, our residents are sensitive about parking in their neighborhoods. We, we, we get more than our share of calls about random cars parked in neighborhoods. And my only guess is why we have zones is to make sure that there's ample parking for the residents within that neighborhood on the street. And I think that's why we don't allow or discourage just random parking from other parts of the city within specific neighborhoods.
All right, okay, yeah, this is something for later, so I, I appreciate that. Thanks, Gary.
Bridgette, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I will, I will just say, I just think it's like, practically speaking, you know, I think if this, ultimately, if the system makes it easier on staff, then I think it's a positive way to go, and I, I mean, Ira, I understand your concern, I just think there are certain streets, but, that, you know, which I know you understand, there are certain streets where it's just very crucial to have a, you know, because there's just employee parking coming into the neighborhoods on a constant basis, you know? But I just don't think, if I'm, if you're coming to visit me for lunch and you don't have my zone, I can't remember what, because I'm in a zone, but I can't remember what. I, nobody's, because, nobody, none of my neighbors are going to call, because you're not going to be, your car's not going to be sitting there for 48 hours straight, which is when I think would trigger the call, you know?
I understand the enforcement issue, I, no, I get that, I get that.
I just think ultimately, I think we are still in a place as a city that we still have to have a system for parking enforcement, and I think ultimately, if this makes it easier, maybe it's a little harder first for residents, but I think if it makes it easier on staff and easier to just do it virtually, it's definitely the way to go.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the plan going forward, the January 1, 2025, would be the date of implementation, because obviously, we want to make, check and make sure the data dump from us to Passport goes well, and then, I had an initial meeting with the communications staff today, we will want a long run of communication with our residents before kicking it off. But you're, you're right, Alderman, the, the time-saving on staff, because it is very much of a manual process now, will, will be an increase in efficiency.
And they'll, I mean, residents will be able to apply virtually.
Yes.
Through the app, so, I mean, not having to go to the place.
Unless you want physical hang tags for your visit, there's no reason to come, go anywhere.
And I think people will appreciate that.
Yeah.
Want to make a comment, though? No, I understand, my comment about the issue of the zone is a discussion for later, it's not, it has nothing to do with us deciding on this here today. I, I don't have a problem with, you know, with the system you want to employ now for us to all get on that virtual system, I think that's fine, I think it works, you know, but I do think there needs to be discussion further about, about what we're doing with these zones and how, how they operate, so, that's all. That was my only reason for the comments, for discussion later on.
Alderwoman Hughes.
It seems like a timely and a, and a, and a good upgrade, and, and I think, Bridgette, you touched on this a little bit too, is when we talk about the cost being 8,000. And, and I think Bridget, you touched on this a little bit too, is when we talk about the cost being eight thousand, I'm sure that you could tell us that the cost in staff time and everything else certainly warrants spending that money now. I mean, that's an initial payment now to upgrade it, but over time, the city saves in its resources. The question I had too was, I know it's done informally at this point, but will there be any type of an established grace period? If, oh gosh, I forgot to get so-and-so a tag, and we just got a ticket, I've got to call within twenty-four hours? Or how do you handle that?
Yeah, I mean, we can handle that. I mean, since I'm managing this process and I manage enforcement, I, one hand should know what the other one's doing in this case. Yeah, there will be a white glove approach to enforcement on these issues. I mean, someone may get a ticket, but it, you know, it's, we will, we'll work through the communications as we're talking to residents that, you know, here's the number you call if you have issues. And so you have a friend over in the middle of the day when this is likely to be enforced, you can call that number and we'll get that resolved relatively easily.
So, yeah, I just wondered if it was, and I'll leave this to you, but is it?
Yeah, there will, there will be a time period.
Or just so it's same for everybody?
There will be some time period of warnings as opposed to actual tickets.
I'm talking about when it happens, does that, it's like, it's like when we'd get a ticket downtown, you had an hour to go pay your quarter versus your.
I think it's a half hour.
Half hour, whatever it was. I never got a ticket, so I have no idea. But i- if there was for the individual who might forget to give the tag and they, they know they have to call within twenty-four hours to get it clarified.
No, no.
There'll be nothing like that, okay, all right, thanks. All right, Ms. Patel.
Thanks, Gary. Great job simplifying to accomplish your primary goals. That was a smart move. I would like to confirm my understanding of the second and third bullets because Ira asked about this and it confused me. The migration, so my understanding was the migration of the existing permits would mean that if you have a permit today, you have a permit in the new system when that migration happens. And so the reapplication is like in a number of years. It's not like within a month.
That's correct.
Can you, right?
That's correct. So everyone who's in the system this year will be in the system, the new system, on January one, two thousand and twenty-five. And then you would not need to reapply until three years later. So there will be another communication process in twenty-seven, reminding everyone of what we did this year.
Yeah.
Now, there will be, for whatever reason, something didn't get manually entered into our spreadsheet that we're sending the Passport to dump into the new system. So there will be warnings issued, people will call and say, hey, I have a permit, and then we can get them straightened out.
Right. In the scenario that Ira described where like someone comes over, maybe you didn't even know they were coming over, you have these surprise guests, you want to accommodate them for parking. If you have the app, you'll be able to go and just like put them in as a visitor, like a moment?
There will be a link within the app to a website for the permits.
Okay.
And you would be able to enter someone immediately.
And say, this is a visitor of mine.
Yes.
Good.
If it is six o'clock on a Friday night, I wouldn't worry about it.
Well, yeah, I, yes. I don't even know if we enforce residential parking those hours. I'm pretty sure we don't, it depends on the zone, I guess.
You know, and the chief. You know, it'd become a matter of police priority and a complaint call.
Totally, understood. Oh, I feel like I have one other question. Oh, I imagine we might have some residents who like aren't comfortable using smartphones and might actually prefer to come into the office to apply for a permit. If that is the case, is that possible?
I, I think we can accommodate that.
Okay.
You know, the only, ten is different from two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I would imagine it wouldn't be like a really high number.
I, I wouldn't imagine.
But there might be some.
There will be, I know there will be a handful, and I probably know their names.
Yeah. Okay.
That will need help, but that's what we're here for.
Great, no more questions, thank you.
Very good. Alderman Fader, any questions, comments?
Sounds good to me, no questions.
So Gary, I just want to make sure I understand that, first, the benefit of doing this. So the, one of the primary benefits are that we have tags without enforcement, excuse me, expiration. And now we will have online with a maturity date, or we'll have tags with an expiration.
That's correct.
And we get the, we're now having the citizens apply online and do some of the administrative work. And so that helps us better manage and monitor the system.
Well, residents always had to apply. They had a paper form that they brought down to the police station and we man, staff manually entered it. So we are skipping that process.
Okay, so, but we're still going to issue tags with expiration?
If, if so requested, yes.
But we, I, from what you've said, we anticipate that to be a relatively small number.
I would assume so.
Okay, and so I am curious, and you may not know the answer to this now, but how are we going to then communicate this? Clearly, there's the communication of how to tell citizens to do this, and so I'm not worried about that. I'm sure you'll have that figured out. But I am wondering about the people that have all these tags that think they have legal parking and then suddenly won't have legal parking. Or what will we do about that? I'm just curious. Somebody has one of these old tags hanging on their rearview mirror and they think they can park there. How will they know they can't?
And they are a resident?
They're one of your scuff laws that have old tags and they're parking illegally.
They'll get caught.
They'll get caught.
What, what, so, but that's what I'm trying to anticipate. So, and then how do we communicate this? Will there be, those people won't know, right? So there's no change in the street signage, or they don't read our website, how, how will they know?
Residents, well, residents will be communicated through the various communications channels that we have at the city. If you are not a resident and have a tag for some reason, you will learn through the enforcement process. Which is.
Couldn't we also do something similar to like an Oops ticket?
Yeah.
If you had an old tag on there and your license plate wasn't registering in the license plate reader that?
Well, I mean, there's.
Just put that on the car instead of a ticket?
There's two scenarios. One, there's someone that just has a tag but shouldn't. And then there'll be someone that has an old tag that should have been in the new system and we missed it. We'll be able to separate the two.
The, the key thing, just really all I'm getting at is, is communication, like all things, is really important, whether it's to our citizen users directly or to the community broadly that parks here. And I just wasn't sure what kind of signage we actually have on the streets. I assume there's a small sign that says permit parking only or something like that.
Well, there's a, there's a sign on there that says one hour parking except by residential permit.
Okay. So, but somebody wouldn't know that there's a change in this system from our signage, is I guess what I'm getting.
Well, but the, the, the sys, the system's really not changing. The sign is not going to change because it is, you have to have a permit. Whether that permit is digital or a hang tag is, is what's changing. Now, there will be hang tags in the new system, but they will be dated, expiration date, so. But you, I do anticipate a transition process where we are going to have to sort through all of, not all of it, but there will be cases where we have residents that, for whatever reason, weren't aware of the transition and we'll have to work with them.
I guess my last question is, is just the process of enforcement. By doing this online, will our parking ambassadors have access to some type of online device that they do as they're going through the neighborhoods where they can say, oh, that car is, is appropriately parked because I found them in the database? Or how, how will technology?
So we use, so we use license plate readers on the enforcement vehicles, and they are tied into the Passport system in downtown for payment, but they're also tied into permits. So when they drive by your house, assuming that you live in a residentially restricted neighborhood and they find your license plate, as long as that was properly captured in the initial dump from our manual system to the electronic system, it'll see your plate and, and say that you have a permit. It only, the way the system works is when they drive down a street, whether it's non-pavement of parking on the street or not having a residential parking permit, it beeps at them so they know to stop and check into it.
Okay. And then getting back to Ira's questions, I presume that Ira will have to ask for his guests' license plate numbers in order to register, register them properly, is that right?
That's correct, or he can come in and, and request dated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Oh, yes.
Oh, the question I, come on up here so everyone can hear you.
I realized there was going to be a Starbucks thing tonight. So a couple of things, I live in an apartment building and I am amazed at the number of people who live in apartment buildings who are not on, they don't have any connection through Clayton, emails, websites, anything. And a lot of them have no idea that they can even get a parking pass. And so saying we're going to do it through the usual communication system is not going to work. It's young people, it's old people, it's, it's everybody. And so I'm hoping that there can be some better publicity, kind of like, I mean, I don't know if the signs are paid attention to for the March twenty-eighth meeting, for instance, there's certainly a lot of those, those signs. We had to get our street cleaned and finally they put a electronic sign at the end of the street to really, I mean, it actually worked. I mean, I made lots of calls, but our street finally got cleaned. So I really, I really want to make sure that people who don't even know there's a system can get parking passes in those residential areas. My understanding, and maybe I'm wrong about this, I thought the residential system didn't work at night. That, I mean, it does if I'm parked there, but I thought anybody could park in those residential zones at night. So I, I thought you were saying something different about that.
Ambassadors do not work after five, but.
And also the restrictions are like nine to five.
A lot of the restrictions happen.
Thought that, that's what I thought.
Non-issue.
Right, they are just, okay.
Have anybody you want over to dinner.
So Ira won't have to enter the license plate after five.
If you're going out to dinner, it's okay, right?
If somebody's blocking your drive.
If they're having lunch.
No, I always, I call, trust me.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, if somebody.
I'm sure the chief knows me. And then the other is, is it, is it consistently the same time for residential zones? Is it one hour, two hour? I mean, how does, is there any?
Some zones are one hour, some are two hours.
Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, usually because the one hours are in more high congested areas. So like, as you're going down Maryland towards Ladue, those neighborhoods, the, the sections of the street that are closer to Maryland and the businesses are one hour restrictions. Further into the neighborhoods are two hours.
So I, I don't know what my street is, I have no idea if Forest Court is one or two, but it should be one.
Well, you may, your, especially your first point is a really good one because I know we don't have the email addresses for a lot of our residents. So we will try to come up with a creative answer to that.
Yes, and once they're in the system, that reapplication process, we need to talk to Passport, but I would imagine there's a way to do push notifications through their app and everything else that once you're signed up.
Getting them into the system.
Enter your email address, then you're going to get alerts and things that it's time to reapply, so.
When I think.
Once you're, once you're in the.
Once you're in the system, you should be good.
The system notified you that your.
But getting them there is going to take some work, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Great point. And, and so what do you need from us?
I think we need acknowledgement that we'll be spending the eight thousand dollars to implement the system.
We'll figure out when exactly we're going to implement this and then we'll either, if it's, ends up being fiscal year twenty-four expenditure, then it'll be in a budget amendment later. Otherwise, if we decide to go with like a January one rollout, it'll be in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. But we just, before we went down the road of figuring all this out, we just wanted to make sure this is something the board wanted to pursue. So we don't need a formal vote at this time.
I think everyone's nodding, okay, there you go. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, onward with your report, the budget amendment.
Yes, we have budget amendment and the first quarter financial report. And Karen Dilber, our Director of Finance, is here this evening for those particular items. These aren't as exciting as the last one, we're just dealing with the first three months of a new fiscal year here.
Good evening. First, I will ask you if you have any questions about the budget amendment before I get into the financial report. The budget amendment is really simple, it's the first quarter, there's nothing flashy, like David said. Generally, overall, our property taxes, we've received a significant portion. We did receive an additional large amount in January, which you'll see on the second quarter financial report. In the general fund, personnel costs are up year over year because of the new salary schedule implementation. Our contractual services are down, if you've noticed, and that is due to eliminating city-paid trash services. And then our commodities are also down, and that's just kind of a few little weird things here and there. The police department spent less in the first quarter on uniforms. I, I think that's just a, a timing issue, and then also the same with the snow and ice control materials. That's also a timing issue, and that, that's, that's pretty much any of the major discrepancies.
It was a great year for road salt.
Yeah, right. Okay, any, any, I'm going to go around. Ira, any questions, comments?
No comments.
Okay, Bridget? No comments, nothing. Becky?
Nope.
Not a.
Okay. Rick, are you sure?
I, I asked David on that question earlier, so I don't need to ask him.
No, I know, you just missed your questions, that's why I thought I'd double check. Okay, very good, so let's see. We need to, we need to approve the budget amendment, so we'll go back and, and have a motion for that.
I'm introducing a bill, actually. I'd like to introduce bill number seven zero one five, approving the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, first quarter budget amendment to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero one five, first reading, in ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, Alderman Berkowitz?
I'd like to move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero one five on the day of its introduction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? But the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
I'd like to introduce bill number seven zero one five, approving the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, first quarter budget amendment to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number seven zero one five, second reading.
In consideration for adoption, sorry about the microphone, in ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman abuse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye, thank you.
All right, the mutual aid bill?
Yes, the mutual aid box alarm system was created in Chicago's northwest suburbs in the late nineteen sixties for mutual aid service in that immediate area. Mutual aid includes fire protection, firefighting, rescue, emergency medical services, and other activities for protection of life and property from an emergency or disaster. Over the years, this mutual aid system has expanded to include over two thousand six hundred member departments in six states. This agreement enables mutual aid response to and from departments in the state of Illinois. Missouri law authorizes political subdivisions in Missouri to enter into mutual aid agreements with, with agencies in other states, including Illinois. Staff recommend approval of the ordinance, joining the mutual aid box alarm system for mutual aid assistance. And if you have any questions this evening, we have Chief Rhodes here, along with Assistant Chief Cows.
Okay, very good. Anybody, any discussion? Anybody want to talk about this, ask questions of the chief?
I mean, I think it's a great idea, I just can't believe that we actually have to pass something in order for there to be mutual aid. It seems a little crazy, but of course, I'm in favor of it, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah. Anything else?
I have a question, oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just, so, we, I know, like, we already have mutual aid with a number of our surrounding communities, but we exercise that on a regular basis, is my impression. And so we. And so, um, we don't, I'm guessing to, we don't have it today with anyone in Illinois and then we would. And I'm curious, just kind of like, how often you think we'd get calls and like, you know, because it's not that close. It's not that far, but it's, you know, can you talk a little bit about that, the types of cases?
Excellent question. So, you know, we do have, the state of Missouri does have a robust mutual aid system. And then in the St. Louis metro area, at least in our, our area here in the, I guess, the eastern side of St. Louis county, we have a, a really good auto aid program, our auto aid, which is every day. Uh, the mutual aid portion is, um, we will probably never go to Illinois and they will probably never come over here. But the reason why we're signing it, number one, it's no cost. But number two, in the event of an earthquake, are a massive disaster where everybody in this whole region are going to be vying for the same resource. We can reach out to Wisconsin, Illinois, Ohio, Indiana, and be able to get resources from them to come in probably hour thirty-six, hour forty-eight. So it's kind of an insurance policy for us and for a really, really bad day. Uh, there is one piece of equipment that we would be interested in calling for, um, that if we didn't have this agreement, we couldn't call for. And that's their extremely large, uh, high volume ventilation fan that can be used to clear smoke in a high rise.
So it's, um, you mentioned other states. So this is actually broader than Illinois?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Cause, cause a bunch of other people have entered into the agreement with Illinois.
Yes.
And so we get it.
Yeah, it's, it's the MABAS, the mutually box alarm system. So it does, it started in Illinois as Mr. Gibson stated, but it has gone to, uh, Wisconsin and, um, Ohio, Indiana, Michigan. And once again, it, and you think about if the earthquake happens, the bridges are going to be a problem.
Yeah.
So the resources can come up around through, uh, northern Illinois, uh, Wisconsin and come in through the northern Missouri down to, down to us hopefully, if there's excess. So it's just a big insurance policy.
I hope we never have to use it and I'll, we'll be glad if we need to.
Uh, yeah.
That we have it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You said something that generated a question. So we have some tall buildings, as you mentioned. City of St. Louis has plenty of tall buildings. Do they not have one of these high ventilation fans there?
They do not. They do not.
So the closest one is located in Chicago?
It's in St. Clair, it's in St. Clair, uh, right across the river.
Right across the river? Okay.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Does St. Clair have any tall buildings?
I, I'm not aware of.
Real, real.
I don't think they have anything like the city does or Clayton does. So.
Okay.
It's a big robust system and they have a lot of funding. So.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take it. Right. We'll, you know, and we can reciprocate if we have something they need, but I doubt it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce bill number seven, zero, one, six, approving a mutual aid agreement with mutual aid box alarm systems to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All right. Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number seven, zero, one, six, first reading and ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, MABAS master agreement 2022.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Alderman Berkowitz?
I've moved that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven, oh, one, six on the day of its introduction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? But the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent.
Let's introduce bill number seven, oh, one, six, approving a mutual aid agreement with mutual aid box alarm systems to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Have you taken a speed up pill? Okay, no. Just notice the difference in, you know.
I know.
Sorry.
Right, the temper, tempo is different. I.
All good.
Possibly because there are people here who want to go to the forum this evening and I thought I would move things along.
Okay. Well, I just noticed it. Okay. Could you just employ that all the time? That would be great. Um, any discussion? Any discussion? All right. Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number seven, zero, one, six, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, MABAS master agreement 2022.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Thank you.
I thought maybe you're going to go super fast.
I've got this report I'm looking at.
Okay, go ahead. Municipal garage.
All right. And May of last year, the city of Clayton entered into an on-call services agreement with Navigate Building Solutions for Owners Representative Services. Since that time, Navigate's team has been working with staff to provide a condition and needs assessment, which was given to the Board of Aldermen on February 27th. The attached proposal from Navigate provides for Owners Representative Services for the procurement of design services, the design phase of the project, pre-bid and bidding, the construction phase of the project, and then post-construction services. The fee for consultant procurement, design and bidding services is $140,700 and the fee for construction and post-construction services is $208,000. That comes out to $16,000 a month over a 13-month period. It is recognized that the project phasing and logistical challenges may extend the construction time by up to six months. Therefore, staff is also requesting a contingency of $96,000, which is six months at $16,000 per month in the event a longer duration is needed for more cost-effective, um, or, or for more services. Sorry. My words mixed up here. Uh, the capital improvement fund has sufficient funding with $1.25 million allocated for this project in fiscal year 2024. Upon execution of the task order with Navigate, an RFQ for design services will be issued. The contract for the design consultant would be directly with the city and will need to be approved by the Board of Aldermen at a later date. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance authorizing the task order. Um, this is actually, yes, a resolution on here. Um, approve the resolution authorizing the task order with Navigate Building Solutions LLC in the amount of $348,700 plus a contingency of $96,000 for the Clayton Municipal Garage renovation project. And if anyone has any questions about the specific services, we can go through that as well.
Um, we'll just go around. Any questions, uh, Ira?
Yeah, I, I, it's probably in here somewhere, but I, I had a hard time trying to figure out specifically what construction services that, that are involved with this.
Sure.
Can you, can you help me with that?
Yes. So during the design phase, uh, they're going to help us put together that RFQ. And so, uh, when we go out to get an architect, they're going to inform us on, on what that RFQ should contain and how it should, uh, what the specs should be. They'll then help us with that selection process. Uh, they're going to evaluate the, and help us with the negotiation as well. They'll evaluate the designs, uh, they'll look for opportunities for cost reduction as we go through that design process. And then they're going to develop detailed cost estimates for us as well. When we get to the construction portion of the project, uh, they're going to hold the designer and the contractor both accountable, acting on our behalf. They'll resolve any disputes between the two. They're going to manage the project timeline for us. They'll provide detailed review of all of the invoices. So there's a lot of cost control that goes in there. Uh, they'll assist with the site logistics. They'll manage the punch list for us. And then when we get to post-construction, they're actually going to facilitate training on the new building system. So there's a lot that actually goes into this and they're our advocate through this entire process. They have engineers on their staff and, you know, they're used to looking at these documents. They know how to control costs on these projects and they're going to hold everyone accountable. So, um, it's a really broad service that we're receiving here.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just wasn't sure. So, but we're, is this their fee for the entire project or?
It is.
Three forty-eight?
This is for the remainder of the project.
Well, I guess I was, I didn't underwrite, but $1.25 million was allocated in the capital improvement fund.
And that's for the project overall, because we know we're going to have design service costs.
Okay.
That's what it is. This, this fiscal year will have some design services. It will have the, uh, the front end of the owners rep services. And we also have to pay for some of the needs analysis work that was done, uh, already. So that's just what was budgeted for this fiscal year altogether for the project.
Rather than just for the construction services.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, not much. Your explanation to Ira was really helpful. And so the one point two, does that still feel like the right budget number? And now that we know what the cost of this.
It is for now. It's going to help us pay for those design services this year. It's going to get us through 24. Uh, when we get to 25 though, uh, that's when, you know, the big numbers are going to hit with construction costs. And those are the numbers we're going to be able to dial in once we have this information here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
No comments or questions?
No comments, no questions. Ditto.
Ditto. Okay. Uh, all right. Alderman Berkowitz.
I move to approve res- resolution number two, oh, two, four, dash, oh, five, approving a contract for the municipal garage project design and construction owners representative task order.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Very good. Uh, that concludes our business and I know that people are anxious to go to another event. Do we want to have a roundtable?
We don't have to.
Okay. Okay. So we'll skip that for tonight. I didn't have anything terribly exciting to report anyway. So, um, I don't know about the rest of you guys. So anyway, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Have a great evening.
Going over.
All right.